Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City Hall. Tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole Meeting will take place momentarily. It is 7:00, so I call the meeting to order, and I ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby? Caven? Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our City Council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask my friend and soon-to-be presenter, Ellen Odom, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ellen. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin tonight's business, I would like to ask the council to join me and the entire community in a moment of reflection on the passing of Dr. Jim McCall. Some of you probably know that Dr. McCall was a dentist here for a long, long time. In fact, he was one of the few dentists around with such a long legacy. His son, Ryan McCall, now practices under the name McCall Dentistry. I had the pleasure of visiting with the family today. His son Brett, of course, his son Michael, his son Andy, and of course, his son Ryan, Dr. McCall. Mrs. McCall, they all granted us the permission to begin tonight's meeting with the moment of silence to honor not only the contributions Dr. McCall made as a dentist, but also as a friend of this community. For those of you who don't know, he was also a musician. He practiced and played Craig, the guitar and stuff, and all sorts of bands, entertained people from near and far. So on behalf of the city, to the McCall family, we express our deepest sympathies, and we hope you find peace in the memories of your dad, certainly your husband, and of course, your grandpa. Thank you very much. We have a good evening ahead of us, folks. We're going to kick things off with a presentation by Ellen Odom regarding the LEAP Fox Valley Program. Ellen, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to set this up just briefly. Ellen and I met for coffee about, gosh, was it three weeks ago?
Probably.
Something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that. And we were shooting for last week, and last week was a full agenda, so we focused on tonight. Ellen and I have known each other for a long time. Our girls played volleyball together in high school and in college. And Ellen has a really cool program that she shared with me that I thought would be beneficial for her to share with the entire community. So tonight, we welcome Ellen to the podium, and the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, my name is Ellen Odom. I live on, in the historic district, the north historic district in Geneva here. And I am the director of a program that we are starting this fall that introduces and involves high school kids in philanthropy. I, by way of background on this, I work for an individual named Jay Christopher. He and his wife had started The Pampered Chef, if any of you know that name. And it's a very philanthropic family. He, the Christopher Family Foundation, had funded the development of this curriculum, and so he's been wanting to roll out some of these programs. This is a program that's been going in Oak Park River Forest for about 15 years now. And so they developed the curriculum that they had been using in that program now and are rolling it out. So I convinced Jay to let me start one here, and so that's what we're doing. The program consists of high school students from the Kane County being in the program, and it's a two-year commitment for them. The first year, they are responsible for giving away $20,000. What they do is they will, there's a whole curriculum, and I have it all here in handouts if anyone would like one, but there's a whole curriculum, and the first year revolves around grant-making. And so they will contact not-for-profits in the area and tell them that they have money to give away, and that they will be asking for what the not-for-profits call restricted grants. And they will apply for them, and then the students all get together and basically vet the not-for-profit. They'll go out and divide and kind of conquer between the applications that they get. They'll go out and see the not-for-profits. In addition to that, in their curriculum, they learn all, the whole business of philanthropy and not-for-profits. They learn about endowments. They learn about foundations. They learn about not-for-profit financials and how each part is important, and not all of the revenue that a not-for-profit raises goes towards programs and the other parts that it goes to. And they learn the percentages. With endowments, we follow the stock market because that's what's important to endowments, and so they'll learn a little bit about the stock market with that. And then they'll go out to the not-for-profits with this information. The not-for-profits have to submit their financials, so they will look at the financials. And then they come back, report back, and each group comes back and reports to what they found, and they have to decide where, how they're going to divide up the $20,000 between them. It's decided as the students, the maximum that can go to one not-for-profit is $10,000. So then they also weigh, okay, do you want to make a bigger impact and give away two $10,000 ones, or spread it out and give away 20,000, or 10,200 ones, or, you know, however they want to do. So they also learn consensus building. It isn't a vote at the end. They have to reach consensus on how they're going to give out this money. The second year, then, they do fundraising. And the fundraising consists of making a presentation to certain donors and to raise money then for the next year. So basically, Jay Christopher has agreed to fund the startup funds for this, which is about $60,000, to run the two years, and then after that, it should be self-funding. So there's basically four aspects of this that I'm looking for help with. One, of course, is contacting with not-for-profits who have been so great with this. They are all over it. They are not only wanting the grants, but they are seeing this as a way to involve the next generation because their donors are aging out, and they say, they talk about this at every board meeting, is how do you get younger people involved in this? The second part is donors. That I'd like to kind of tee up some donors that the second-year people, so that isn't this year, we're only running the first year. So this is next year, we're running the second-year program, so that they have some maybe warm leads to go after, and people who have at least bought into the program. Also mentors. I think I have enough mentors for this year, but the mentors are people in the community that are involved in philanthropy in one direction or another. Either they're involved in it, or they've run philanthropic organizations. And then the last piece, which is the hardest piece and the one I have the least control over, is getting students involved. So if any of you know of any students or any way that I can get this word out, that would be great. We have a website, www.lepecircle.org. On there is all of the information that you need about the program, along with the student application. We have received a few applications already, and I'm trying to get this into some of the schools. So if I call you a student council instead of city council, it's because I've been talking to student councils. So it's those types of kids that are going to be interested in this program. And we look for a wide range of kids, and I really think that instead of advisors, getting kids interested in this program, it's going to come from parents and other people that know about the program, that know kids that would be interested in this. In addition, we've partnered with Dominican University, and they can get up to six credits, college credits, to participate in this program. So that is another plus with this one. So that's, oh, and then the third part of this is strategic volunteerism, of which they find not-for-profits, or we match them with not-for-profits that they would like to work with in an area of their interest. So that's the program in a nutshell. It's for all Kane County high school kids, and it's going to be all high schools together. We're meeting at the third Tuesdays of every month. At the Methodist Church here in Geneva has agreed to give us space, and so we've got the program all together. We just need the students. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Odom?
What does LEAP stand for?
Leadership, Education, Altruism, and Philanthropy.
Okay. That's a lot.
It is. It is.
Ms. Burkhardt, and then Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, what an awesome program. It sounds like it has so many different pieces, financial literacy, and obviously being a thoughtful giver, and all the research to go into. I mean, I find, I have an eighth grader, and, you know, I think young people are so, they want to give to the, they want to, they want to change the world, basically, you know, as all younger generations do, but I think they are bombarded with so much information, and so this sounds like a really great thoughtful way to give them the tools to be involved in change in a couple of different ways that they could, they can do it, so.
Yeah, they really do learn, another segment they learn about is how businesses partner with philanthropy and how they can carry that forward in either when they go work for a business, or if they own a business some year. And they also, we'll also study companies that are really good at working to help with philanthropy as part of their mission.
So it would just be a student needs to live in Kane County, then?
Kane County, yep.
Okay. And it's that once a month, and then they will, other, I would assume, tasks and responsibilities outside of the means?
Yeah, not, you know, we're trying not to make this a big chore for them. You know, we know they're involved in other things, but really, it's the two hours a month, and if you're doing the college credits, it would be an extra hour before then. And then, other than that, it may be like in February, going and looking at some of the not-for-profits to look at the grants, and also, you know, whatever volunteer work they want to do. But we're trying to keep it fun, and, you know, we just want to engage them in this. We don't want this to be a big school thing, you know. It should be fun.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
And I have information electronically from Ms. Odom that I'm happy to forward to the entire council if you permit me.
That would be awesome.
You got it. I'll send that tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. It sounds awesome. You said you've been talking to school boards. Have its schools been receptive to somehow putting it on the radar?
Some have been, some I'm having more trouble getting into. I know that, like, the Oak Park River Forest program has developed a reputation over the last 15 years, so all their advisors know about it. Here, it's a new program. Advisors are so busy doing so many different things that I'm really hesitant to make that that's our source of students. It would be great if they know about it, but I really think more of a grassroots movement with parents and maybe working with, you know, like key clubs, or some of the students that are maybe more already involved in philanthropy might be more interested in this, or at least hear about it. But it's really just getting the word out because it's a new program. Some of the St. Charles high schools have already put that in their newsletter. I'm trying to work with Geneva Now and Batavia, but schools like Marmion like it because it's part of the service hours that they need to get. And we're also working with, like, Elgin Academy for those same reasons.
Great.
So some schools have been more receptive to this than others, but, I mean, everybody's swamped at the school level, and I totally understand that.
Can I get one of your?
Absolutely.
I presume the, is the electronic information the same content?
Oh, okay, you got the?
And this is basically what's on, there's more on the electronic one.
Okay.
I'll send that as well, so. Anything else, Mr. Bruno?
No, thank you very much.
Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love the information. My son is going to be a senior at Geneva, and I'm signing him up right now.
Excellent.
He's watching, by the way.
No, he's not. That's why I can get away with it.
And sign up his friends, too.
No, I do think that he and some of his friends I have in mind. I think that they will be interested, and I agree with you, the grassroots effort is always the way to go. I also am the Director of Religious Education at the Unitarian Church, just kitty-corner from here.
Great, yes.
I would love to have you come speak to our high school youth group.
That would be awesome.
And get some of those kids engaged and involved. I think that would be fantastic. So I'll catch up with you after the meeting, and we can exchange information.
That would be perfect.
So, and also, just one last thing for the schools. Geneva has, it's called the Online Backpack.
Yes. Someone just forwarded that to me, and I'm looking into how to get the information. She forwarded to me how to get something submitted on there.
Yes, okay, perfect. All right, thanks.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Ms. Odom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again. Just for the official record, the clerk advised me that we will record Ms. Ruby as arriving at 7:02, just so we have that in the minutes. We are down to item four, amendments to the agenda. Other than my request via electronic mail that we remove items nine A and B regarding the Festival of the Vine, are there any other amendments to the agenda anyone would like to offer? Very well. Item five, the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and they can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion, Ms. Burkhardt makes the second. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
All right. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. According to my scorecard, we jump all the way to item 12A.
10.
Correct, 10A. Boy, we've got to pay the bills. Whoopsie-daisy. Way to go. Municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
All right. Total expenditures are $4,729,364.33.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which can be, a quick second by that guy, Kassarag. Any questions, any comments? Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye. With eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and two absent, the bills have been approved for payment. Now, we jump to 12A. Under presentation of ordinances, resolutions, petitions, and bids, our first item, 12A, is to consider approval of ordinance number 2022-35, granting variations to allow more than two driveway entrances and to increase the allowable lot coverage from 35% to 38.13% for the property located at 1258 Meadows Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Maladra makes the motion, Mr. Swanson makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the subject property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Meadows Road and Dryden Road, and is improved with a single-family detached dwelling fronting Meadows Road. The dwelling includes a side-loaded attached garage with one access point for a driveway on Dryden Road. The applicants, Jonathan and Amber Hilton, would like to add a semicircular driveway with two additional access points along Meadows Road. The zoning ordinance permits two driveway entrances, however, the proposed new driveway will increase the total number of access points from one to three. In addition, the allowable lot coverage for the property is 35%, but with the proposed driveway and other improvements, the total lot coverage would increase to a non-conforming 38.13%. The applicant is not proposing any modifications or alterations to the existing building. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 28, 2022, the commission recommended approval of the requested variations. So this evening, we do have the applicants, Jonathan and Amber Hilton, with us, and also Director de Groot, if you have any additional questions.
Are there any questions from the dais for either Director de Groot or Mr. or Mrs. Hilton? Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. This would be for Director de Groot. Was that a unanimous decision by planning and zoning? Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Did you just pull a muscle having to stop? We have a motion by Maladra, a second by Swanson. A roll call vote would be in order. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, this item has been approved. Thank you. Item 12B, consider ordinance number 2022-36, amending Title IV, Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two, Liquor Control, Section 4-2-29, Sale, Delivery, Consumption, and Possession of Alcohol/Liquor on Public Property of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Malat, la, no. Do you again? Marx?
That'll work.
Good Lord, sorry about that.
I'll second.
Second by Marx, okay. You guys look so much alike, it's.
I know.
Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so this is a housekeeping matter to resolve conflicts in the Geneva City Code as it relates to the sale, delivery, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor on public property. An ordinance passed in 2014, and then a recent ordinance passed in July of this year, both authorized the sale, delivery, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor on public property in specific instances. One is specifically either as part of a city fair or festival, and the other is by securing a sidewalk cafe license. So the ordinance for your consideration this evening would eliminate this conflict within the code. If you have any additional questions, I will be happy to entertain those.
Any questions for the city administrator regarding this housekeeping measure? Seeing none, hearing none, a roll call vote would be in order. Madam Clerk?
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, this item has been approved. We're at item 13, folks, public comment and new business. Anyone joining us live? Any public comments that wish to? We will all be cruising over to your house later to park our cars. Any new business? A motion to adjourn the council meeting is in order, offered by Mr. Marx. All in favor of adjourning the council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Going to take one minute to transition to the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, August 15, 2022. I'm Alder Person Bruno from the First Ward, which I share duties with the esteemed Alder Person Burkhardt. Let the record show that everyone's in attendance, with the exception of Alder Person Caven and Alder Person Mayor. First item, recommend suspending the rules to permit council member Bruno to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Kilburg, seconded by Kassarag. Any discussion? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Items of business. 4A, consider draft resolution.
Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Crossed off the wrong thing. Three, approve committee of the whole minutes from August 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
No.
Kassarag and Swanson for the motions. Any discussion? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, 4A, consider draft resolution declaring three police vehicles as surplus property. Do I have a motion? Burkhardt for the motion?
Second.
Marx for the second?
Okay, so this is, again, also pretty much housekeeping. So this evening, you're being asked to declare a 2008 Jeep Wrangler, a 2008 Chevy Impala, and a 2011 Ford Crown Vic as surplus property. All of the vehicles have been replaced with new vehicles, and these will be sold at auction.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4B, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a professional engineering service agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick at a cost not to exceed $192,230 for engineering services for design of water and sewer replacement on South First Street from State Street to South Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Burkhardt.
It was Kassarag, wasn't it? I only heard his, then.
Oh, yeah. Does silent once count?
Ah, that works, okay. Sorry about that. So this one, for your consideration this evening is a request for professional engineering services to provide plans and specifications for replacement of the water main, leadwater services, sanitary sewer, and installation of fiber conduit on South First Street on State Route 31 from State Street to South Street. The water main and sanitary sewer in this area was installed over 100 years ago and is in need of replacement. Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, Inc. have performed similar work for the city in the past, and staff was satisfied with their work and negotiated a contract for the design and specifications for South First Street. Construction of the improvements will be determined after consultation with the Illinois Department of Transportation. With us this evening, we do have Superintendent Van Gescam, and then also on the line, we have Randy Newkirk from Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions from the dais? Alder Person Kilburg?
Hi, Bob. How are you doing?
Good evening.
Well, I know that we're a long way from any excavation. Is there any possibility that this project could be, when we do the installation, make those changes on first? Any chance that we could coordinate that with the developments with the railroad and the trestle? I mean, obviously, you're probably thinking along those lines as well, but is that conceivable?
Exactly. It is conceivable. I'm crossing my fingers that that's going to be the case. It's going to be difficult since we don't have a timeline from the U.P. Of course, IDOT is a wild card on this, too, as far as approving the plans, and then we would have to time it all together with bidding and getting a contractor involved.
No, I think it, I think it, within, um, you know, uh, probably eight weeks at, at best is, is probably what it would take.
Okay, well, good, uh, I'm sure, uh, yeah, just so we don't have two disruptions, I know that would be.
No, while, while it's, you know, while the detours in place is, would be the time to do it.
I know it's hard to coordinate everything, but, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else at the dais? Seeing none, sensing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 4C, Consider Draft Resolution Awarding Bid and Contract to the Von Corporation at a cost of $32,884 for an underground cable fault location system. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kilburg?
Seconded.
Seconded by Maladra.
All of us.
We're going to use semaphores on the next one. Uh, any discussion at the dais? Oh, I'm sorry. You're out of line of sight, that's the problem.
Bids were received for a new underground fault location system to replace the existing equipment that is more than 25 years old. Three bids were received, with the Von Corporation being the lowest bidder. The existing underground fault system equipment will be utilized as a spare until such time as it is deemed surplus, and we do have Superintendent Holton with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Any discussion at the dais? Seeing none, sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last item of business, 4D, Consider Draft Ordinance Approving Furnishing Municipal Water Service and Sanitary Sewer Service to a residential property outside of the corporate limits of the city without requiring annexation at 2133 Heather Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Swanson?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kozarag. I got, I got you one.
Okay.
Ms. Dawkins?
So Catherine Welter has requested to connect the City of Geneva's municipal water service and sanitary sewer service, uh, for her property located at 2133 Heather Road, which is outside the corporate city limits. Ms. Welter is interested in annexation and is exploring the possibility of a joint application with other property owners in the area. However, her septic system is failing, and she would like to make the connection to the city's sanitary sewer system as soon as possible. The city code and state statute provide that an unincorporated property may receive the city's sanitary sewer and water services upon petition of the property owner if the city determines that annexation is not required. Should the committee recommend approval this evening, the matter would go to a special city council meeting next Monday, August 22nd, for formal consideration. Uh, with us this evening is Director DeGroot and Superintendent Van Gescum, um, and unfortunately, the applicant was not able to be here, but I'm sure Director DeGroot or Mr. Van Gescum are happy to answer your questions.
Any discussion at the dais? Alderman Kilburg.
Uh, David, probably.
They're waiting to see what the question is.
David, um, how many properties, uh, are in the same situation on Southern Western Avenue there and over to, um, the, uh, the street here, uh, Heather, I guess? Are we talking about a half a dozen properties there, or is it actually more than that?
It's probably more than that, if you look into that whole Allendale area. Um, we've had kind of one-offs like this over, at least, the last few years where, um...
Did any of those involve annexation at all?
They haven't so far.
Okay.
Um, this property owner is interested, as is her neighbor across the street, and we've been talking, uh, with them about that process, but unfortunately, that would take longer, um, than she really has to remedy the situation.
What would be the disadvantages of bringing those all in collectively at the same time, since I think most people assume that all those properties are probably, uh, a part of the City of Geneva? What, what challenges, uh, on behalf of the city, what, um, what would be the downside as it relates to those residents? Anything?
I mean, from, from our perspective, I don't think there's a downside to annexing the properties, especially if we're going to continue to provide their, um, our services to them.
Yeah. Um, I, I'd assume that all except those few that you said, uh, have taken advantage of city water and sewer, all the others are still on septic, then.
Right, and when, and when, I don't remember the exact distance, Bob, I don't, if it's less than 250 feet, if they're, if they are that close to our services and the county won't allow them to replace their septic, and they have to connect to our services, and that's a situation that Ms. Welter's...
It's a matter of time, the clock's ticking on a lot of those properties.
Right, so that's why we've encouraged them to, to talk to their neighbors and hopefully have a joint application to bring those in.
Okay, that's really all I had. Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
Oh, you can, you can stay up here, David, I have a question for you, if there's no other discussion at the dais.
Sorry.
So, um, these, uh, these little cutouts that are unincorporated, uh, they, they then, uh, they're also free, they contract with ComEd for electricity?
They do, so they can stay with ComEd.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it. Any other comments from the dais? Seeing none, sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Onto item five, Public Comment, New Business. Any new business from the dais? Any public comments? Guess not. Um, item six, Adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, all those in favor signify by saying aye.